Good evening, everybody, and welcome. It is November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and we start each school committee meeting reading our mission statement. The Ashland Public Schools strives to be a model district that creates a culture of inclusivity for our diverse students and staff, who feel safe and supported, are empowered with the academic and social emotional skills to pursue their chosen path, and embrace their roles as positive contributors to local and global communities. This meeting is being recorded by W A C A Cable TV. Our agenda this evening includes call to order, public participation, reports and presentations. We have the A M S Middle School Band. We have an update from Ms. LaChapelle. We have M Cast Presentations, Mr. Kyra, approval of the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six school calendar, warrant approval, superintendent's report, assistant superintendent's report. The action items and discussion updates include first read of policies, J G I F R, athletic concussion regulations, A D, vision and mission statement, E B C F A, face coverings. Our second read includes, and approval of policies includes, A C, non-discrimination policy including harassment and retaliation, A C R, non-discrimination policy including harassment and retaliation, approval of gifts and donations, reports of school committee members, and then I will move to enter into executive session under M G L Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, Superintendent Jim Adams, or to conduct collective bargaining with the intent of not returning to public session. And then we will adjourn. So is everybody okay with the order of events? And are you here? Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
I just recommend moving the calendar out of reports and presentations and into the action items.
Okay. That makes sense to everybody? Yep. Mark?
Here and yes.
Marcy? I see you.
Thanks.
Awesome. Okay, we will start with our student. Well, first, I'm going to ask if there's anybody here from the public who would like to leave comment. Don't see anyone on Zoom, and I don't see anyone in the audience, so it is your turn, the A M S Middle School Band. Welcome.
Thank you very much. So, oh, I should talk.
Yeah, please, that'd be great. Right at the bottom.
Thank you very much. So, we were just, first of all, thank you for having us here, and I would like to thank, so, students for volunteering to come out tonight and parents for making that happen because we have a concert tomorrow night as well, to high school, and so we're going to take this up, and give you a little brief look into the parts of the concert. So, one of the things that makes the band very challenging, but also fun, is that there's a lot of different parts going on in the band at the same time. So, we put a lot of emphasis on musical literacy, being able to read your part, because if you can't do that when you come into band, trying to fit all like, it's about twenty different parts going on at once in your typical band piece. So, with that said, we only have a few parts here tonight, so it's not going to sound anything like it's going to sound tomorrow night with the full band. But you get a little chance to hear some of the parts individually, and if you come out tomorrow night to the high school, you can, you can hear the full bands. It's going to be our annual concert with the high school bands, and the eighth grade band is going to be playing with the high school band for the finale at the end of the concert. A chance for them to sort of get a sneak preview of playing with the high school bands and Mr. Ma. So, at this time, before we play, we're going to have the seventh graders come up and play a short piece, and then the eighth graders will play a little short excerpt as well. But maybe the seventh graders could come up and introduce themselves and maybe say a quick word about why they joined band.
That would be awesome. And while you're making your way up here, I might have forgotten to say that this meeting is being recorded by W C A, C A Cable TV. And with your permission, some people might like to videotape you as well, if that's okay. Yeah, awesome. All right, welcome.
So, you guys, you guys want to, well, parents, introduce yourself and maybe say, hey, you can go first. Just introduce yourself, maybe say why you're going to band, or why you picked your instrument.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Ben. I play the bassoon. I'm one of two people in Ashland, the Ashland school system who plays it, and it's really fun.
So exciting, thank you. Hello.
I'm Mike, and I chose to play the trombone because my sister did it, Chris. And I really enjoy it.
Awesome.
Hi, I'm Lou. I chose to play the trombone because I always thought it was a cool instrument.
Awesome, thank you.
Hey, so we're going to have the seventh graders come up here, trombones on our right, bassoon on the left. Let's start with eclipses. So, they're going to play a short excerpt for you from the piece called Eclipses, which was actually picked out for this concert by another member of the band, they really requested, so it's at the right level, so we ordered for the band. It's kind of a high-energy piece here by Sean O'Loughlin. And so these instruments here, bassoon and trombone, are playing most of the bass line. So, you're not going to hear really a melody on this particular one, you're going to hear a little excerpt of the bass line near the end of the piece. You guys ready? I'll come on right up here. Oh, yeah, so seven, eight. Where are we starting? Fifty-five, all right. Off of there, I'll count you off. One, two.
Hi. Thank you.
Before they sit down for good, they're going to play for you also a little excerpt from In the Hall of the Mountain King, which was composed by Edvard Reed, and this is one of his most famous pieces in the modern era. I think you'll probably recognize it. It's been used in a lot of TV shows and movies as well, such as, most recently, trolls, I believe.
Awesome.
In the Hall of the Mountain King. Oh, from memory, all right. Can you say all right? You want to come over here? Yeah, question. All right. Getting over where you're starting? All right.
It's too heavy.
You all set? You're ready? One, and two, and two, and. Take two, take two. Don't worry about it.
It's all good.
Sounds good.
Sounds great. All right. Fabulous.
Nice job. I should say that Ben just started a bassoon, what, a few months ago, right?
Amazing. That was so good.
Beginning of the summer, nice job. So now we have some, eighth graders are going to play for you a little short piece as well. You guys want to introduce yourself first?
Come on up.
Who's first?
Hi, my name's Sam, and I chose playing the clarinet because my great-grandmother actually played the clarinet. And like, it's a fun instrument because you're not always playing the main part, you're not always playing like the sidelines.
Awesome, thank you, Sam.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Jenna. I mainly joined band just because I wanted to pursue music. I always thought it would be interesting. I mainly picked the horn because it sounded funny.
Love it, thank you.
All right, so, so we just observed veteran theme on Monday, so for this concert, we're doing a tribute to the Armed Forces, Armed Forces on Parade, and it has all this service songs, except for Coast Guard and Space Force, unfortunately. So, we're going to start, so we're not going to play for you the whole thing, I think we're doing the Air Force, Air Force theme, correct? All right, I added that G. One, two, three. Well, thank you for listening to us, and hopefully you're all invited to the concert tomorrow night at the high school. And we're going to have another concert, too, in March, that's going to feature some local composers and maybe some student composers as well.
Well, thank you so much. I can guarantee that will be the best part of this entire meeting. Sorry, Ms. LaChapelle. Yeah, yeah. Thank you, guys, that was awesome. And gals, yeah. So good.
Thank parents for bringing them out.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
See you, pal.
So cute.
So, I just wanted to preface the conversation that Ms. LaChapelle is going to have tonight is, as with other principals, when students have come to perform, I basically just wanted all principals to give an outline as to what's happening in the schools. Obviously, this is Erin's first year as principal of the middle school. It's not, I want to just, you know, contextually, there are lots of moving parts right now at the middle school, and tonight's not the night for us to go into detail as to what's happening with regard to, you know, scheduling, world language, other issues that may impact budgetary concerns as we move forward. So with that being said, I did want Erin to just share with you how things have been going for her for the first few months, since July one, and give an overview. So, thanks, Erin.
Thank you for having me. I didn't know if they were going to be on, so I was going to start by thanking Mr. Conant for bringing in those students. He jumped at the opportunity when I said student performers, so it's great. Looking forward to the concert tomorrow. It's been definitely a big transition from assistant principal to principal, but I am so supported by an awesome team of other building leaders, as well as Jim and Mike. So the transition's been going well. I think, I don't want to say I'm settling in, because every day is a new, a new challenge, but it's been a really positive change for me personally in the transition and the difference that the role like provides, you know. Every so often, we need that in our lives, I think, to challenge ourselves, so it's, it's for sure. I will say I've been overwhelmingly impressed with the level of engagement in classrooms at the middle school. It's, it's really, it's obviously very different than the high school, but especially seeing, you know, sixth graders and their excitement for learning and those aha moments, and the high level of engagement, six, seven, I mean, has been really, really positive to see on a daily basis. Safety has been a big focus for us this year, district-wide, but in the middle school. We've had a couple other things at the start of the year that have caused us to really focus on safety, not only safety in the building, but making safe choices online and messaging and things like that. So we've had a couple of class meetings where we've talked about building safety, our safety plans, as well as how to be appropriate online, on social media, when to report things. We had class meetings on Wednesday where we reinforced our Alice protocols, and then we rolled up a Say Something Anonymous reporting app with the grades six, seven, and eight, and did a training on that. Really, really well received by students. They've done an awesome job of asking questions and bringing up concerns when they have them about peers, and I'm really proud of the way our students are stepping up to look out for each other. I started the year putting out to parents of middle school, as well as the staff, that my entry plan really this, this year focuses on mainly observing. So I've told them I'm going to see things, I'm going to hear things, I'm going to count, meaning looking at data, and then my goal is the end of January, beginning of February, to put together a very small report, which I'm sure I will come here to present on, kind of findings of what I think is going really well at the middle school, and then areas that I think we can look to improve over the coming years. So I, I, I ask a lot of questions on a daily basis, and I am so lucky that the staff has been willing to openly share. So I've had amazing conversations with, I can pretty much say, every staff member at this point, with the kind of their feelings on things that they really enjoy about the middle school, things they want to see stay, things that they are open to changing, and their ideas for that change. People have definitely felt, I feel at least, comfortable coming to me and saying, this is what we think, this is what we hear, this is why this has been done. So it's been really positive for me to feel welcomed immediately by the staff and that they have that comfort level to talk to me. I, I said in the beginning of my first year, I wasn't going to come in with any major changes, and as Jim alluded to, one thing that we do know we are looking at is, is a schedule change for next year. So I'm not going to get into details on that right now, but I'll give you kind of where we're at with things, just in very general overview. I, I do have a good number of years of experience with scheduling from the high school, doing the master schedule for seven years, and then was really lucky to be a part of the DESI scheduling cohort last year to evaluate schedules from an equity lens. So did some really, really great work with, with them, and immediately, when I started in July first, looked at the schedule from that lens of saying, where are areas that I think we can improve and make changes, and what are things that work well. So I started the year, again, asking a lot of questions, but then did put out a survey, optional voluntary, to the entire faculty and staff of the middle school, and I think got really solid feedback of what they really, really care about and want to keep, and got a lot of honest feedback of things that they're open to for change. So I think when we think of schedule, we often think of things like times and blocks, and that is something we're looking at, but I think looking at some of our data, I'm starting to throw out things of do we need to look at curriculum and options and changes. And so those are things that I plan to come and talk about in the coming months with you, you all. But really, the faculty, I felt like anyone who took the survey was very authentic and honest in their feedback of what they really care about keeping and what they're open to when we look at saying, we're going to change something, what those changes might look like, and giving some good suggestions. The biggest challenge, I would say, this year has really been a staffing change and needs. We still have some open positions at the middle school, we have an open school psychologist position. Our other school psychologist is new this year, she is absolutely fantastic. So we have, we have a plan in place, working with Brittany Hawkins and director and the student services, to use an outside company to help do some of the testing, and then Kelly Roy, our school adjustment counselor, is helping with the counseling piece, but that is definitely a hole that we're struggling to still fill. We have an open special education teacher position right now, which, again, we've been able to work to get emergency licenses and piece things together to cover and satisfy requirements, but again, a person that we're missing. And then world language has been a real challenge to find qualified candidates that are licensed and to keep them and find them to be a good fit for our building. So those are ongoing challenges that we're working on day-to-day to make sure our students have the best experiences possible and the highest level of engagement and learning that, that we can put out there. Positives, definitely. I feel the positivity in the building every day, I think the culture and morale, I don't know what it previously was like, but I feel really good about where it's at right now. We're adding a lot of fun to middle school, which was a big request of parents when I met with them this summer. So we're doing a spirit day every Friday, we've been planned for the rest of the year, and teams and grades have really jumped on fun things as well. So grade-level spirit and grade-level fun and games and events, even the staff jumping into wanting to do some fun staff things, like staff secret, secret underground spirit days that the kids don't know about, which is going to be funny. Breakfasts, and again, really just reinforcing, I think, with the faculty and staff that I'm here as part of their team and to listen and to feel comfortable coming with, you know, questions, concerns, comments, and that my door is open. So it's been a good transition, it's been a lot, but it's been good.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Erin?
I'm just curious about the psychologist. Thank you. Just about the psychologist and sort of what the caseload is for a psychologist, and is that, is that a person who's available to kids who just want to talk, or is that only a part of like, support for students on I E Ps? I'm just trying to get a sense of how significant the impact is of only having one instead of two.
There's definitely impact. School psychologists do the testing for students on I E Ps and student on I E P counseling. Sarah has done a fantastic job at working her schedule to meet as much of her caseload as she can, and Kelly Roy, like I said, we have a, we have a plan in place, so student services are being met, but it's definitely being felt with regard to testing, and I think the unknown is, if anyone requests evaluations and things like that. So Sarah knows her day-to-day management of caseloads and can kind of schedule out reevaluations and things like that. But when things come up that are new, it's definitely something that she's, she's fitting in, which is where we're using, partly using contracted service to help with offset that testing need.
And that, so that those folks are involved exclusively with the I E P process?
Yes. Yep. Yep. So school counselors, our three school counselors, and then Kelly Roy, our school adjustment counselor, would be day-to-day access for any student who needs support, yes. Yep. Yep.
Typically, and I agree. So, but Kelly, this year, we've had to transition into some of the special education.
So she has a caseload because of it, yep.
Normally, that's not the case.
Right. Big team effort at the middle school.
Good to hear.
You good? I think we're good. Erin, thank you so much. Welcome to your new job.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
We're so happy to have you.
It's good to see you.
Thanks for the report.
Morning.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, next up is the M Cast presentation, Dr. Kyra. Get it up there.
This is the accountability data presentation. Okay.
There you go.
Okay, so, yeah, so thank you so much, I'm glad we were able to present this today, I know that we were hoping to do this at the last meeting, but.
I know that we were hoping to do this at the last meeting, but we, uh, are now all on film and, and ready to go. So my hope, my hope today is to, um, give you just really an, an overview of, uh, some MCAS and some accountability data, uh, to, to just let you know where we've been, where we're going, look at the landscape of our assessments, um, and then just sort of show you some trends that we've observed. Uh, there are trends that we wanna show from across the state, as well as how our, the Ashland Public Schools is comparing against the state. Uh, and then it'll take a little bit of time to highlight some areas of celebration, as well as talk about some areas that we need to make sure that we are working to improve and to continue to improve. Um, as we, you know, always wanna make sure that we are giving our students the best opportunity to succeed. And, you know, the achievement scores are one way that we can measure that growth. First and foremost, I think it's important to talk about, you know, who we are, who are we teaching? Who are the students that are in front of us? Uh, because we are looking at the data from two thousand, the spring of two thousand twenty-four, I think it's important that we're actually talking about the students who were assessed. So the data that's in front of you right now is actually, um, the, the enrollment data for students in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Um, it, you know, I'm not gonna go through the entire, you know, data point that's in front of you, but I think it's important to know that these, these are the students that, that we have in front of us. Obviously, we have a large EL population, um, particularly, uh, at the Warren Elementary School. Eleven point one percent of our students, um, are English learners. And I think it's also important to note that, you know, our students who have first language is not English, you know, thirty-five point eight percent of the population at Mendez.
So, so Mike, is, is that the student or is that the, the household?
That's the household.
Okay.
If their first language is not English. Yeah. Yeah.
So it's not necessarily representative of that they haven't had English from the get-go, but it's, it's more like the whole, the, the entirety of the family.
That first language is, is not English in the household. Yeah. And then obviously you see our, our percentage of students with disabilities, um, you know. I, I wanna explain that the idea of the Ashland preschool looks obviously high. That's because we are an integrated preschool and that's the purpose of our preschool population. So you see that as a thirty-five point five percent comparative to the other, the other schools, but that should be much higher, obviously.
I'm just asking a couple of questions. Let's just, um, look at the progression of percent EL. I mean, so where, where preschool shows twenty-three point seven percent, then you get down to the high school, four point five percent. Um, is that a, a representation of the progression of students that when they sort of, uh, I guess they test out a VLS report? And that occurs over time, or is this an indication of a changing population?
Yeah, it's, it's representative of both of those things, actually. So, um, it's great to see that we, we're moving from, you know, Warren Elementary at eleven point one down to four point five in high school. And that is sometimes representative of the fact that students are now formally known as English learners because they are testing out. Uh, but it also is just generally representative of the population of students. But they're, they're both of those things combined. I think you might see a little bit different next year. Uh, when we look at this data, because we are higher at some of the upper levels than we are at some of the lower levels. Uh, that, that it has changed. Um, but yeah, Mike, bring up a good point. It is, is really both of those factors would create that discrepancy.
And then just looking at the, the percentage of students with disabilities, trying to understand the point you made about the preschool. It does strike me as a little odd that, like, their lower elementary and our high school have similar numbers. And then the two other schools in the middle age group are there. And I'm like, is there something there or is it just by quarkage?
So it's, so we have to determine if there's something there. We, you know, one of the hardest parts about, uh, special education is determining that we are ensuring that students are getting what they need, but also to ensure that we are not, um, overqualifying students. And that we are looking at the systems that we have to put in place to ensure students are getting what they need before we go to the room of special education. Uh, and that's something that we're really dedicating ourselves to, particularly at the, at the elementary level. Um, I, I, I'd like to think that one of the reasons right now that our Warren numbers are a little lower is because we have done a really good job, um, looking at data and putting data teams in place there. And that's where we have started that process. Uh, I think that, you know, the work that, that Pete and Kate had started and now that Erica is following along with, with Pete over at Warren, have helped to identify early struggling learners and providing them with the interventions and supports that are needed to ensure that they are not ending up qualifying for educational plans. Uh, so I think that, that could be part of that reason. Um, so we have to, you know, watch the trends and see if, if, you know, the implementation of some of our NTSS resources and, and, and looking at data in a, um, a more detailed vein will, will help to keep this trend alive here. That's, that's the goal.
And, and that, and the students with disabilities, those are, you, you're using that phrasing. It's just ones that are receiving some form of special education services.
Correct. So, so this, any, any student who is on an IEP is a student with a disability. So, uh, if, if they are receiving speech and language support, they are accounted for in, in this, in this percentage number.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So here's the assessment landscape. I think this is important to talk about because we wanna see where we are. So in two thousand nineteen, obviously, there was a full MCAS test administration. But then things changed. In two thousand twenty, we did not take the MCAS. And then in two thousand twenty-one, we had a half of, of a test. And then back in two thousand twenty-two was the reimplementation of MCAS. Uh, I just think it's important to see that, that, that things have, things have changed slightly over time since two thousand nineteen. And when we look at our accountability data, we are still being compared to our pre-COVID data, which is two thousand nineteen. So when you look at the accountability numbers, we're still in many areas, as a state and as a district, trying to get back to where we were. And those are some of the things I'm gonna talk about later on in the presentation. Um, but it's just, it's just, to me, this is a good slide to show that this is, this is a trend now that we have to get back to two thousand nineteen, where they had the old full test administration. And then we slowly got back there. Now, other things that we've implemented here in Ashland in particular, to get more data about our students, is now we do have the K to eight universal assessment for I-Ready and Diddles. We are doing those things, which we were not doing in two thousand nineteen for, for our entire school district. Uh, we have universal literacy screeners that came into play in two thousand twenty-three to ensure that we're trying to find, uh, any students who are struggling or showing a potential for dyslexia. We have all those things in place now. Um, we've developed data team meetings. We've partnered with S3 to help us look at the whole child, particularly at the Warren School, and hopefully that work will continue on to the Mendez. Uh, and then we, now we have a, a system too, that I've showed you many times, that open architect system. And that is controlling or helping us to look at data in a, in a really more rigorous way. We have, we have a system in place now where we can look at student data over time. And, um, we have all of our assessment results in that, in that one dashboard system to be able to make sure we have consistent use of it across the district. So what are we seeing? You know, these are the trends, uh, Massachus-, these are the Massachusetts trends. So in general, um, there was an average decline for all students, particularly in ELA across the state. As you can see in twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three, forty-five percent of the students in the state were meeting or exceeds, and that dropped by three percent in the state. Um, and then in two thousand twenty-four, there was no, there was really no relative change in math. It was about forty-two percent meets and exceeds. Uh, that was really no change from twenty-three. Uh, and there was a slight improvement actually in the state in science, which was interesting. Um, about one percent more students matter exceeded, um, based on their achievement score in, in science. But one thing we do know, uh, is that across the state, there's still significant ground that needs to be made up to our pre-COVID testing. Uh, there, there, you know, learning loss is something that we've talked about. Uh, it's a, it's a topic that folks get a little bit antsy about, but it's real. It, it did happen. There, there was, there was a time and place where students, the gaps were created. And we've noticed that and we realized it, and we still have a lot of work to do to get to where we were pre-COVID.
Hey, Mike, I, I don't know if you know the answer to this or if anybody's has the answer to it. But obviously, when you, when you have a standardized test and you take it this year, you take the same, you know, if I went back to fifth grade last year and this year, they're different tests. They're meant to be the same level, if you will, but inherently there is some differences. And so even with the same group of kids, they might be, they might perform slightly different. Do we have any gauge as to what the state would consider similar scores? You, you know what I mean? So like I said, they're different and question A and question B could be thought to be the same level, but you give them to the same group of students and they won't necessarily perform a hundred percent the same, right? So, uh, whenever you have a test that isn't the exact same test, uh, comparing it to the other one, there has to be some margin.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not really sure how to answer that. I, I, I think that not only is it a different test, but it's also a different cohort of students as well that you're looking at each year.
Right.
Um, I, I don't know if I'm answering your question, Paul. I'm not sure if I'm totally understanding your question.
Well, well, part of it's like, hey, if, if it goes from forty-five to forty-four percent meeting, you know, do you draw, you know, at some level, you, you don't draw a big conclusion about small differences because yes, it's different cohort, but it's also, even if you took the same test, you went back in time and said, okay, I'm gonna give you this one and this one. They're not gonna score the exact same score on those two tasks.
Sure. Yeah. And I, I think the reason I'm showing this particular information is to say that across the state though, there was, there was an average dip for, for the entire state. So if we're seeing potentially some dips in Ashland, it follows the same model of what we saw overall in Massachusetts.
He's preparing us for what's next, apparently.
Well, in, 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 in a way.
Oh, that's a problem. Everybody's sleeping.
Right.
It's, if, if, if we see some struggles or we see our, our numbers go down, that is on par with what happened across the state of Massachusetts in two thousand twenty-four. That's why I think it's important to show this.
Right. And I think your point is, Paul, like, and it's a good one, but however you correct, I don't know what, what the terms are, the margin of error or the, um,
It varies.
Right. They, they statistically are thinking about those things. I'm sure it's not that they don't consider it when they score. But at the same time, you just can't, you can't prepare for every single thing. Like maybe they make one question a little harder the next year and one a little easier and that's supposed to balance out. But that's probably gonna happen from year to year.
Yeah, no. And, and, and I wasn't, I wasn't commingling the two things. One is getting the state data and seeing the trends over the entire cohort of the state is valuable and understanding how we did, and that kind of normalizes it for that test, right? Um, but when you compare years, it's, it's really hard because it's not the same test.
Right. Right.
And the test is the variable there as well, not just the cohort.
And that's like where the human imperfection comes in. They have people saying that question in two thousand twenty-four is equal in difficulty to the same one that they asked the next year. But Abhishek, did you have something you wanted to share?
My understanding is they, what they do is they scale it. So it's, it's kind of like a bell curve system in that they, if they see that a question, question A last year got fifty percent got it right, fifty percent got it wrong, and this year it's sixty percent and forty percent, they'll do their best to scale it so that they'll take, they'll take a question that other people got wrong and, and kind of weigh it out. So.
That makes sense. Yeah.
The real variable there is not whether the test is actually more difficult or easier. I mean, while that does play a factor, it's, it's more actually the cohort. So I think the real, the real actual thing that would further demonstrate the data is seeing if this cohort did better last year than they did and now it's a decrease or something like that. Like comparing this year to last year for the same group of students.
Awesome. That's helpful. Thank you.
So what I, what I wanted to do too now is just to sort of show you subject by subject how we are comparing, um, to the state. So particularly in ELA, if you notice that, you know, our numbers are meeting exceeds, we did drop, um, three percent from the previous year. Um, and you can see that, you know, over time in two thousand nineteen, you can see where our numbers were. We, we, we are on a downward spiral right now. Um, we had a slight increase from twenty-two to twenty-three, and then we dropped a little bit in two thousand twenty-four in terms of our overall average, uh, overall, uh, meeting exceeds numbers, um, the percentage. But we do remain fourteen percent above the state average. So we've consistently been about that. If you, you can look at this, these, you know, this line graph to see that we are about the same way we've been throughout in comparison to the state. But there's some work to be done, you know, seeing that we are three percent dipped from the previous year is something that we need to look, we really need to look at. Um, what I do like seeing is that our SGP, uh, while it didn't grow, it remained about the same. So anytime you're over a fifty percent SGP, it means our students are growing the way they are expected to. So fifty percent growth is the goal all the time. That means we're getting about that full year's growth for a student. Um, again, our average scaled score was five oh three. Um, it was one point lower than the previous year, but again, we're above the state average by eight points, uh, in ELA. And this, this is our entire cohort of students. I'll get into some more details about grade levels in schools as we move further on the presentation. In math, again, we also saw a slight dip from the previous year, one percent, but we remain eighteen percent over the state average. Sixty percent of our students are meeting exceeding in math, um, with an average scaled score of five oh six, which is a drop from last year's five oh seven. Uh, but again, it's, it's eleven points higher than the state average. Our SGP went down slightly, um, by two point two points, but again, we are over, uh, the state average by eight point six points. Uh, but still, I think seeing the fact that ours, our SGP is well over fifty gives me hope that our students are performing well in terms of our average growth.
Mike, what, what has been the, um, the score for high school graduation? I mean, I know you've got a whole thing changing there, but, but, you know, we were seeing like five oh six here in math. Is, is there a certain number that was what people had to hit to graduate?
Yeah, so in, in terms of, uh, graduation, you have to be partially meeting, um, the MCAS requirements. So that number can change based on year to year. Um, I, I can take a look at when we get, when we get into the, the, the high school math data. I might be able to glean what, what the, what the difference was in terms of the score between, uh, partially meets and needs improvement was. I don't know what the cutoff necessarily was, but there's a very low percentage of students in national public schools who are not meeting. Um, we, we, we're not one of those towns right now who were having a large number of students that we were afraid, we're not going to make that, uh, graduation requirement. In terms of science, no change from the previous year in terms of meets and exceeds, and we remain sixty percent above the, above the state average. Uh, but we, but our scaled score did go down by two points from five oh six to five oh four. There is no SGP in science, so that, that's why there's no data there, uh, because we're only taking it every few years. They don't, they do not measure SGP for our, for our students in, in the area of science.
There's an interesting bump up in twenty-three to twenty-four. Like there's a, a, a bigger spread between the, um, state average and our, our scores as I'm reading it. Is there anything that we figured? So if I, I'm looking at the, the line chart on the left hand side, right?
Yep.
That, there's a, the, we're closer.
Twenty-three to twenty-four.
Yeah, it is. I mean, I don't know how big that number is.
Yeah, so.
Is there anything we pointed to or think is the, that has resulted in that positive change there?
Yeah, so as I said in the, in the, in that first slide, um, the state went up. The state did go up with a slight improvement in science. So it went from forty-three percent meets to exceeds to forty-four percent. I, I, I don't know what accounts for that. I'm not sure.
Well, I'm looking at, like, we, we, I think we as a district, right?
We, we went, we went down.
Twenty-two to twenty-three. So where, where the green, where the green and the state is the, the state is.
It shows up as blue on my screen, but that's all right.
Right. He's talking about the bump from two years, two years ago.
Twenty-two to twenty-three.
Twenty-two to twenty-three.
Yeah, that hu-, that huge bump, like, did we identify what might have contributed to that?
I, I don't know. I don't know what, yeah.
We'll do it again.
I thought you were talking about twenty-three, twenty-four.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, twenty-two to twenty-three, we did have a significant increase.
Yeah.
Um, and we leveled off since then. Yeah.
So, so Mark, the cutoff, just for MCAS tenth grade, I looked up, was four eighty-six for, for the CD, the cup, cup and, and C determination.
Thank you, Jim. Now looking at it by school. So at Mendez, um, looking at ELA first. So we, we dropped down in terms of our students meeting and exceeding in ELA. Um, but we increased in math. So it's in, interesting data to look at. Um, we went down by four percent and we're only six percent above the state average in terms of the students that are meets and exceeds. And, and our average scaled score went from five hundred to four ninety-seven. Average SGP also is under fifty, which is, which is an issue, uh, something that we need to look at and we need to understand why. And I can, I'm gonna break it down a little bit further into the actual grade level. And I can, I'm gonna break it down a little bit further into the actual grade levels to see where we are seeing the most struggle. Uh, but it is something that that certainly brings our level of concern to our, to our attention and things that we're, we're talking about um at the district-wide level during our curriculum meetings, curriculum leadership meetings, as well as at the school level to dig into that, to dig deeper into that data. In terms of math, uh, it was an increase. Like I said, fifty-five percent of our students are meeting and exceeding, and that is a two percent increase from the previous year, and we're still thirteen percent above the state. Uh, our scaled score stayed the same, and our SGP was a slight increase. So in in math right now, I'm feeling very positive. Things are going well at the elementary level. And it's interesting because we've, we've talked a lot about over the course of the last few years um of looking at a different math program. Uh, but I think we've, we've gotten really good at teaching using the program that we are utilizing, and we've also added some, some great resources as well. Um, so we're, we're feeling confident in the area of math right now, particularly at the three to five level. Uh, but in the area of ELA, it's something that we have to make sure that we are taking a good, hard look at. Breaking it down by grade, okay, now, you know, you can see that grade three, um, we were seven percent down from the previous year. Uh, we are, we were at, we were at sixty percent meets needs, and now we're only at fifty-three percent. Again, I wanna continue to say we are still well above the state average, but we need to be improving each year as a district. And when I see that our average skilled score in grade three went from a uh five oh two to a four ninety-eight, that's something that we have to talk about. Um, there is no SGP in grade three, obviously, because it's the first time students are taking the test. Grade four, there was real no, there was no change, um, except in SGP. Our SGP dropped by five point four points. Um, this, and it actually is an area where we dropped below the state average. So grade four ELA, in terms of the growth that students made, is something that we have to take a hard look at. Um, it's, it's still the same in terms of students meeting and exceeding. It's that number didn't change, but we're not at that fifty percent SGP, and we really need to be. Uh, in terms of grade five, we also saw a dip, right? We went from a five hundred average skilled score in twenty-three to a four ninety-six average skilled score. Our SGP is just under fifty, but in in tw- two thousand twenty-three, it was over fifty. So we are, we are indeed seeing right now a dip in grade three, four, and five in terms of ELA. Uh, when we took a deep dive into the data to see why, it's really about writing. Uh, our writing, our writing scores are where we struggled, our essay writing in particular, our, in our narrative writing. So what have we already decided to do? We have implemented already this year, um, some professional developments, some professional learning strictly in the area of writing. I'm really proud of the work that our brand-new literacy coach at Mendez has already implemented. She has um held two, if not three, uh, professional workshops uh for our staff looking at writing and looking at um narrative writing in particular. Uh, we are, we are talking about small group writing and what we're, what we're doing in our small groups to make sure we are implementing uh small group instruction, and um the teachers are taking to it. And 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 she is going to hopefully at some point come to the school committee to present some of the work where they're doing. I have a meeting with our literacy coaches on Friday um to learn more about exactly how they're implementing, you know, the, these writing processes. Uh, but Suzanne has made it her task right away, uh, because we looked at this data in the summer and we said, these are, this is what our goal needs to be. Um, also, you know, folk tales, folk tales.
Uh, Ms. Marcy's hands up? I don't know if that was.
Yeah, my hand, sorry, I was just, can I ask a quick question?
Of course.
Sure.
Um, and sorry, I don't know how to lower my hand now. So, um, just a question following up on Abhishek's comment about following the cohorts, since grade five is one of the areas that dipped. Are you, are you going to have this writing skill in the sixth grade too? Cause the grade five cohort's now at the middle school, or what's the idea there?
So I don't wanna get it too far ahead of ourselves, Marcy, with that, but yes, there is, there is certainly some, um, we are certainly talking about um some, some potential changes uh for the way we are teaching um ELA at the middle school, and I I don't wanna give any, any spoilers.
No, that's fine. I was just, I was just curious like about, cause I thought it was a really good point, like if you follow the the classes, which I'm sure you do, cause there's so much data.
We, we are highly, uh, we, we are looking at some potential changes, specifically as we look at the schedule at the middle school, and one of the major focuses is going to be writing.
Okay.
I don't wanna.
That's politically correct. Go on.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question about writing too?
You touched on an important point. They're both smiling. I don't know if you can see what's going on over here, but.
I can't see you guys, but I'll, I'll go with that.
It's something they're working on.
Okay.
A quick question about the wr- the writing piece, and it says like the idea development. So is, is, are the, the areas that you're able to pinpoint where students are, are struggling or the, where they need, where we need to see more growth, I guess I should say? Is it around like the sentence structure piece? Is it around the mechanics and like the punctuation and spelling and that type of stuff? Or is it a combo thereof?
It's mostly about, about developing their ideas and being able to take their ideas and write a coherent piece of, right?
Okay.
For a coherent, coherent essay.
Yeah.
So one of the things that Suzanne has done is she has implemented a, a graphic organizer.
For sentence and paragraph structure, that type of stuff, yeah.
That everybody is utilizing, and and she has done, one of her first pieces of professional learning for the staff was introduce this new graphic organizer. Um, we are also working on that at the K to two level as well, particularly our second, our first and second grade team has developed rubrics and for writing development, knowing that this is, this is an issue across the board. Obviously, it doesn't just start at Mendez, right? So we are looking at um creating better rubrics that can help us to uh understand where our students' weaknesses are in writing, but uh, but knowing that it's about idea development, we're taking a look at these graphic organizers and introducing these so students can now know, I can develop this on my own when I go in and have to create an essay for MCAS.
Okay.
Yeah, they're more interested in, in that development versus the, the grammatical errors that exist.
Yeah, I wasn't sure exactly which pieces they focused on when they're casting scoring.
Yeah, they're not focused on that when they're looking at the grading aspect of it. It's what's the development of the idea? Do you have evidence to, to support that idea, et cetera?
Yeah.
And and I think with Abhishek and then Marcy bringing it up, I, I do think it's probably important to make sure understanding what we're looking at here, when we say grade three and how, that it's about our instruction and delivery to the students and how, uh, and it's not about following, it's not those students compared to last year. It's comparing this group and how we delivered and 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 how they absorb and and perform. Uh, it's a, so it's different than following students uh with this information, but we do have the information both from their MCAS scores and also I Ready and all our other assessments for tracking students.
And that's why SGP becomes such an important thing to look at as well, because the SGP is really about the cohort, right? How, how your students performed over time.
Yeah.
That's why I always, I personally think that is the most important data point that we have. And that's why I look at this data and I'm concerned that we are not at fifty percent as, as, or at fifty for SGP in grade four and grade five.
You might right remember, Mike, that, I mean, we've, feels like as long as I've been on the school committee and we've looked at data like this, you know, Mendez has largely hovered around the fifty percent threshold in both math and ELA, so that, I mean, the, I know you're probably gonna go to a next, but the, you know, the math data, that's a, that's, there's real positivity there, right?
Oh, sure.
And it's huge. I mean, you're, you're, you're getting the kind of growth that we really were only getting at the middle school before. And, you know, obviously, the ELA data, you get to get to it and what you already have and implement a plan to, to correct for that. But, you know, there is, there's some real positive stuff here too, and um, you know, I think we've always, like I said, seems like Mendez was always the one that didn't perform as well on the MCAS, one tool, right? Just one tool, but.
His historically, that's the accurate, that's an accurate statement. That, that has been, Mendez has been the school where we have seen the lowest, the lowest um achievement scores.
And 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 growth and as well, right?
Right. But then you look at math, which is a great segue, Mark, and.
I was, I was just teeing it for you.
Yeah, well, and and I'm thrilled, and particularly with looking at this grade four data. If you look at grade four, sixty-two percent of our students are meeting or exceeding, and that is six percent higher than the previous year. Uh, but not to get too positive about things, cause I, I, I wanna make sure that we're, we're hitting everything, every, every data point. SGP went down in grade four, so we have to determine what happened there. You know, it only dropped two point two points, but it's still, it still went down. We're well over fifty, but I, I wanna, I wanna dig deep a little bit, so we need to, we need to, you know, take this and see who were the students that did not perform, you know, or move up in their SGP.
Although, although SGP is one of those ones where you wanna say, hey, is there something there to it? But slight fluctuations when you're, you know, like, if you had a great year, you know, we had a great, it's like, okay, so, but, you know, you'd always wanna build on that, but going from sixty to fifty-nine point seven, you know, th- there may not be, there, there, there's probably gonna be some fluctuation there that's, that's okay, but when there's two-point difference, was there something to look at and address, right?
Which is what we have, and and we can look at some particular students.
It won't always be, yes, there must be something, right?
Absolutely. And in grade five, um, we, we sort of held strong. I, you know, we had a, you know, a slight dip in our average scaled score, but our SGP improved. We're at sixty, and a fifty-three percent of students are meeting and exceeding. I think we do have a lot to celebrate in terms of, you know, what we've done and what we've accomplished in math, particularly at, at the Mendez school. Um, the, 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 the areas where we continue to struggle are word problems, right? That, that's something that we've been working on for a long time as well. And I think that um as we look into writing and we improve our writing, we also can look at how we are explaining our mathematical problems as well. So those, those are hopefully areas that we can improve upon at the Mendez. Other areas for improvement, uh, decimals are always an issue. Uh, that's something that has been consistent. Um, and we've also continually struggled a little bit um with things like quadrilaterals um and of, you know, numerical expression. And so the, these are, these are typical problems that we, that we have found uh in, and we need to make sure that we're continuing to change our instructional practices around those.
Okay, all I can say is that list makes me ask that question about, am I smarter than a fifth grader?
Quadrilateral, right.
I don't even remember what some of these things are, you know?
And you, and you're gonna find some themes too, that, that, that we are struggling in the same areas that'll, that we struggled around, the state struggled as well. And to, to talk to you a bit, a little bit about how we chose these areas for improvement, these are areas where we saw a significant dip in, in how we performed the year before, or in some cases, we may have been actually below the state average. And that's why we said these are the, these are the main areas for improvement. Uh, looking at the middle school.
Can I, I'm.
You go back?
Yeah, just for one second. I'm just struggling to reconcile something in my head, and, and I'm sure it makes perfect sense. So when you look at, I'm looking at like grade four math, grade five math, right? So grade four, we had sixty-two percent of our kids were meeting or exceeding, and a fifty-seven point one percent E SGP. In grade five, you have fifty-three percent, right? Smaller number in terms of those who are meeting or exceeding. But we had sixty percent growth, right? Even better growth.
Yep.
And so it's sort of like, how do we have better growth, but fewer kids meeting or exceeding?
Because some of our students um may have been a, a low partially meet, but they may have almost reached that threshold of meets. So they showed a great deal of growth, but they never, they never changed from partially meets to, to meets. So they, you know, they may have just barely made it, and now they're right on the cusp of meeting. So that allows for that, that increase in the SGP.
Or there could be growth within, you, you could go from meets to exceeds, and you, that, that number didn't, that number wouldn't change.
But, you know, what, you know, back to the grade four, you look at that green line or that blue line, however it looks on your screen, it's continuing to rise. From two thousand nineteen, we are, we are absolutely on the rise there in terms of, you know, our students who are meeting and exceeding. So that's, that's probably my favorite graph to look at in this, in this whole presentation.
Yeah, you can see that in the data too. Um, it goes from thirty percent um in, in fourth grade at um partially meeting to thirty-nine. Um, and then it goes from fifty in fourth grade to forty-three. So that, just that shift leads to more people actually growing and, say, going from the not meeting expectations to a partially meeting expectations, while still there's a, a set amount of people not reaching that threshold.
You have better eyes than I do.
We're also not smarter than a tenth grader.
Right.
Eleventh grader, eleventh.
Or tenth grader.
So look, looking at the middle school, um, again, ELA, a, a slight dip from the previous year, fifty-eight percent. Uh, but our SGP went up uh in ELA. And then in math, again, a, a, a dip in our students meeting or exceeding, we're still over the sixty-one, you know, at the sixty-one percent. Uh, but our SGP went down as well. So we, so it's interesting that in math, at the Mendez, we're really happy. Uh, but we're looking at the numbers at the middle school, and that's where we have to take a closer look at what's going on.
And and just to follow up on something Mark said, I mean, I think just questioning the, how the SGP and percentage of, you know, meeting and exceeding relate to each other, uh, if you look at ELA for middle school, for example, we went up two point five, but went down a percent. And so when we always talk about uh closing gaps, do we look at the data to ensure that, that growth isn't just our students that were, you know, in the upper part of, you know, and we, that we, that we're closing the gaps and not making essentially larger gaps because we really uh helped those exceed higher, but we didn't, you know, do this, you know, get the same results. So even if that gap are the same, we wanna, wanna close that gap, not make them larger. So I think those kind of correlations can.
Yeah.
Digging into that can say, hey, are we, are we doing what we wanna do as far as closing those gaps? Cause that might indicate a, a little bit more of a spread, right? The, hey, we got, we got that, but we didn't get people crossing this particular line. Now, it could have been growth within the bottom part of that. We could have closed gaps, cause it could have been on bottom too, but.
And and the data shows it right there, Paul, because you can see that, you know, in two thousand twenty-three, we, twelve percent of the population wasn't meeting, but that thirteen percent of the population wasn't meeting in ELA in, in two thousand twenty-four. So that, that, that increased by one. Um, so that is an area that we have to work on, right? Why, why are we seeing an, an increase in the amount of students who are not meeting?
That chart shows, also emphasizes the point that you were making before, Mike, about if you look at twenty nineteen versus twenty twenty-four, like, the growth in the meets all look decent, but if you look back to where twenty nineteen was, we're not there yet.
That's right. We have a lot of work to do to catch up, to get, to get to those pre-COVID numbers.
So there's an eleven percent increase in both, or like an eleven-point increase in both uh meeting and exceeding and the average SGP for, between the Mendez, and then it jumps up to the middle school. So do you think that could be like a, a curriculum issue, or what's, what do you see that discrepancy being caused by?
These are, these are the conversations that we have to have, Abhishek, so I, it, it, it could be a curriculum issue. It could be a cohort issue, and it could be um, uh, the fact that we are trending the same way the state trended this year. But you're bringing up the exact questions that we're talking about during our, our curriculum leadership team meetings. And we are right now in a cycle where we have not taken a real hard look at our middle school math curriculum in a long time, um, and we, we need to take a look at exactly what we're using. Uh, so you're, you're a step ahead of the game, my friend, and that's something that we're gonna be taking a good look at this year.
We ha- we have to identify the problem so we know what, what problem we're fixing.
So by grade level, um, ELA by grade, you can see that across the board. Um, you know, fifty-six percent of our students in grade six met, met or exceeded. We went down a little bit in grade seven. We went down by one percentage point in grade eight. Our average scaled score went down in grade seven by three points, but in grade six and in grade ten, it went up. Uh, and our SGP um increased across all of the grade levels. So, you know, we're, we're, we're doing relatively well in, in ELA um at the, at the middle school level. Uh, where we see some improvement, again, writing, narrative writing and essay writing, it was the same, it was the same as, as the Mendez data in terms of. Narrative writing and essay writing was the same, it was the same as, as the Mendez data in terms of where our struggles were. One of the common themes similar to us finding about folk tales at the, at the Mendez school where we struggled. Was poetry at the middle school level, so a lot of the questions that were related to poems. Our students struggled with, so we've got, we've had to have those conversations at the middle school level, what are we doing to ensure our students are understanding. Different passages and understand the elements of poetry.
So, so Mike, I, I know we're looking to get these numbers back up at the macro level, but if you look at grade six and grade seven. Our curve relative to the state curve, we tanked a lot more, uh, during COVID than the state did.
Yep.
Have we identified those areas and made the adjustments in there, those areas in particular that. Uh, cause obviously, you know, particularly the grade seven, right, uh, those. Those curves aren't even close to being, you know, so we, we obviously went down quite a little bit for some number of reasons and. And do we go back and understand that to make sure we're, we're, we're adding those focus supports, not only based on, hey. But this past year, but going back to ensure we were closing that, whatever gaps obviously occurred there, relative to the state, right? We, we obviously well underformed re- relative to the state as far as.
Yeah, uh, uh, we can, we can certainly go back and look at that two thousand, you know, twenty one. Data and see where we struggled the most, and that's something that I can, I can do, we, we have that, we had that information, I, I can't say.
Cause it could be lingering, right, it could be, hey, we never really recovered from, cause obviously something was very amiss.
I can't speak to that right now, because it was, you know, quite a few years ago, but I can tell you that I, I know with confidence. That one of the areas that we struggled with then was also our writing. It's consistently been writing, I don't know what the other, you know, in detail what the other areas were, but it was definitely writing, it has been throughout.
It is interesting to go back and look at the Mendez, the cur- our curve, you know, more closely approximates, and if anything, we did better. In that, uh, I guess it would be the twenty one year, um, as compared to the point Paul's making about. Both in ELA and math, and from ni- I'm sorry, nineteen to, yeah, nineteen to twenty one. So, I don't, yeah, but in some ways you could, you could, if that was a statewide kinda thing, you could say, well, it hit kids in middle school harder. Right, but, and there's some, some showing of that in math, but ELA is different.
Yeah, we really didn't do.
Yeah.
Do you guys also have any, any data on whether the areas that you did, um, like earmarked for improvement are, have actually been improving? Like say, um, you marked essay writing down, say, in sixth grade, let's say, we got a fifty percent in essay writing. Do you know if that went up to say a seventy percent?
No, the rea- the reason that those were, were listed as particular areas of need of improvement is because we, we either dipped. Or below the state.
Okay.
So, you know, majority of the time, it was either on par with where we've been and we fell below the state, or we actually showed a decline in that particular area. So, my math, math, again, same thing, right, you, you talked about that large dip from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty one. We had a slight increase in twenty two, and we're, we're still seeing a, a steady decline in, in every area except in grade eight. Grade eight continues to be on the rise, so we were sixty seven percent, uh, meets needs, uh, but. Back to that, why are we going down in our SGP, we've gotta, we've gotta figure out, you know, the correlation there. Uh, but overall, um, in, you know, math in. At the middle school level is something that we have to take a good hard look at, particularly grade seven, right, we have a seven percent decrease. Um, in our students meeting and exceeding, and the SGP went down by one point eight points. Why? Areas of improvement, again, solving real world problems, it was the same thing at the Mendez and it's the same thing at the middle school. Solving real world problems is an issue, uh, and we've gotta make sure that we're, we're looking at how we are. Um, assessing the students regularly to see if they're growing during the school year, and how are we instructing the students in those areas.
And, and Mike, just, uh, this is the only place where we're tracking growth, obviously, right, so when we see. Hey, we didn't get a good growth here, we're, we're looking at our other data points and other assessment tools that also give you the idea of a year's growth and. You know, if, if this particular data point, cause it's only, it's MCAS, so it's one of the data points. If there might be an anomaly, hey, the SGP only says this, but these other two assessments that we're using. Don't show that it went down two percent, you know, they didn't show it, the dip, then we can, you know, uh. You know, take this for just one of, one of N number of data points, right?
For, for the most part, our I ready data is, is matching.
Okay.
Um, it's, you know, there are obviously some, there are some discrepancies, but more often than not, we are, we are seeing.
That gives us confidence in this too, right, so you, you have multiple data points to go on.
So, Ashland High School, um, ELA in math, uh, we saw a slight dip in ELA, we saw a slight dip in math. SGP, uh, went down in math significantly, um, for the previous year. But, you know, I, I think it's important to note though, we are still well above the state average in ELA in math. Um, areas for improvement in the two, essay writing, again, and, um. Again, we, we just picked out this particular one on math, this one was, was well below, and it's, uh, calculating the measure of the central angle of a circle. Given the radius of the circle and the length of the arc intercepted by the angle, we picked that one out. That, that was, that was a piece that, that we struggled with, we just picked that one out, uh, as, as a, as an area that. Really wanted to show you how, how much we're digging into this, to say, this is, this is one of those questions that we need to make sure.
This is where the open architects really make this, something that is practical to be able to dig and get that thing, those, those information. Readily as opposed to before, we have a very manual and, and intensive task, right?
Now, looking at science, um, because it's just in grade five, grade eight, and at, and at high school, either nine or ten when they take it. Wanted to just show you in general, um, how we're doing, we had a one percent increase in grade five. There's no SGP in grade five, obviously, cause it's the first year, there's no SGP at all in science. Um, we did have a slight increase at Ashland High School, going from sixty nine to sixty eight percent. An average scaled score went down by two, but in general, our, our science scores have remained on trend. Across the board.
What, what's the, what's the deal with the graph for the high school? Well, we don't have, we don't have two years of data, uh.
Yeah, there's some, there's some missing data.
Okay, is that just, what, wasn't, wasn't in?
Yeah, we didn't have it in the system. So, then there's also that accountability data piece, um.
And just, just to say on it, is that one data point a true data point, or, or should we look at that, I mean, that, that would be the first data point that's below a state average?
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a skewed sys- skew in the system, we weren't below the state average, yeah. Uh, in terms of the accountability data, overall classification, we get an overall classification based on all of this combined accountability data. And we are not in need of intervention or assistance as a district. Um, we have made substantial progress toward our targets that the state has set for us, we met the target. Um, for our recovery path for all students in ELA, so recovery path is essentially. Are we moving towards where we were in two thousand nineteen, we haven't, we haven't gotten there yet, but.
This is like a COVID recovery.
Recovery path, so the recovery path is based on, are you still making, um, progress towards meeting where you were in two thousand nineteen? So, we, we did meet the target data for that at Ashland High School. Um, our non-high school students though declined by point oh eight percent in ELA, so that's something that we are a little bit concerned about. Obviously, it's not a huge percentage point, but there's a slight decline in our students who aren't in high school. Um, our SGP, uh, for all students was high, we were fifty percent or greater in our SGP in all areas. And, uh, we did meet our target for chronic absenteeism, obviously, that was one of our superintendent district goals, so we did meet that goal. And, uh, all students exceeded the target for progress toward attaining English language proficiency, we, we, we are proud of that as well. Uh, there's, there's obviously a lot more accountability data that we can look at. Uh, I did link it into the slide presentation, if you wanna take a look at it, uh, there's lots of things that we can talk about, but I know this is more of a. Ten thousand foot view of the data, so I wanted to just bring on a couple important takeaways.
Is the top classification sort of the, the sort of best, if you will? Of, of meaning, we're not requiring assistance, there's not like a exemplary or a.
Oh, there are exempt, there, there, there are districts that are, that are, that are, you know, considered exemplary districts and districts that are given honors.
So, there is, there are classifications to.
Yes, yes.
Um, and then the reason for the classification, um, is we've made substantial progress, but we haven't met, or something like that, or.
Well, there, there are, there are still targets that we have not met, yeah, and there are targets that we have met, but we're making, we're making progress towards all those targets. So, there weren't any targets where we, you know, declined significantly.
Do districts have access to each other's results, like, for instance, like, if an exemplary district, like, is it worth looking at? How they are addressing writing, for instance, since that's a district wide problem here?
Yeah, so I, I, they have the dark data, it's all accessible in the state, we can go on, we can see what districts, you know, have. Uh, done fantastic in, in writing, and I can certainly make some calls and talk about what they have done. I do, I do feel real confident with the steps that we've already made, um, especially in writing, because we, we got on it this summer. We said this was something that we need to make sure that we're actively, uh, trying to make changes for, so we're addressing it right away. But, but I think that is important for us to, you know, reach out to other districts and see what they're doing.
Awesome, thank you.
And this is just, you know, quick overall things, what are celebrations, what areas are concerned, nothing that I didn't already really talk about when. But just to sort of summarize things, right?
Right.
It's important to note, we are outperforming the state in all areas, we should be, we, we, we need to be, that's, we hold ourselves to a, a higher standard. And we wanna be a model district, but, so we should be outperforming the state, but it's important to note that we are, we are outperforming the state in all areas. Um, we had, we had great SGP improvements, you know, two percent in grade six, in ELA, three point four percent in grade seven. But there was some decreases, right, in our meets and exceeds, grade three, seven percent decrease in grade three. Average SGP dropped by five point four percent in grade four, and an eight percent decrease in meets exceeding grade five, so. We know that there are some areas of improvement necessary specifically in the grades three, four, and five in ELA. Again, you can see the celebrations for math, uh, we talked about those as well. Um, we've got, we've got some things that we, that we need to work on, so what are we going to do, okay? We're having in-depth reviews during our data team meetings, so we have had data team meetings in place at the Warren School. Um, now we need to make sure we're putting data team meetings together at the, at the middle, at the Mendez school and at the middle school level. Um, Mendez has started that data team meeting process, they are taking in-depth look at the data. Um, and they are using some of the protocols that have been put in place at Warren. So, obviously, Ms. Altman was a part of that process, she's been a member of the cohort that's working with the S three team. They're taking some of those, uh, processes and procedures and putting them in place at Mendez, to have those difficult conversations. And now what are we doing also for our intervention strategy, we've talked already about, we're hitting the ground running with, with the writing. We've, we've noticed that that is a problem, so we're, we're implementing some significant changes there. Uh, we have to improve our intervention processes, we've, we've got to take a good hard look at what we are doing when we discover that students are struggling. We, we have to have a better system in place for identifying struggling learners. And that's why we need to do a better job of looking, like Paul, you said, looking at our early data from I ready. You know, because it is a good indicator of where our students will end up. So, we've gotta make sure we're utilizing that data during our data team meetings to say, here's a student right now who's falling in the red. What are we doing for them to make sure they're getting what they need when they need it, so those interventions are happening? Uh, we have to do a better job utilizing our open architects to be able to say, here's where all the data lives. Let's get in there and take a look, and, uh, we are still actively developing with them a process. So, we can have student interventions within those dashboards, so people can see, this is what has been done. And this, these are, these are the improvements that we have seen based on those specific interventions. And I'll, and I, you know, think that we need to take a good hard look and examine our current practices. Um, specifically in, in elementary literacy, obviously, we, we've done a lot of work in that area. Um, we're proud of the things that we have put in place, particularly at the early elementary level. Um, those students have not necessarily reached Mendez yet. Uh, from those different things that we put in place, the kids that have had a couple years of Haggerty, the kids that have had the foundations. They have not necessarily gone up to get tested yet, I'm really interested to see what happens with our students who go from third to fourth this year. Because they had, they, they were not the ones that have had two full, two, three full years of it, but they've had a couple. So, we talked about this in the summer, I'm really interested to see what happens next year with our third and fourth graders. Um, but we've, we've gotta take a good hard look at, at, at how we're teaching writing in particular. And, um, where our, where our growth, if our, you know, if, if we continue to see a, a decrease in. In the, in the meets and exceeds and the growth, we may have to talk about ultimately making some changes.
Is it, um, unrealistic to sort of have as a, a. Say a goal, and I don't mean that from a formal adoption of a goal, but, but sort of a, an effort to see sixty percent SGP. You know, across math and, some math in ELA for all levels?
I don't think that's an unfair goal, but, that, that, I, I think sixty percent SGP in math in ELA across all grade levels. Is a, is a goal that we should aspire for, I mean, that's, it's a legitimate goal, I mean, fifty percent means we're doing a good job. But sixty percent means we're, we're really doing wonderful.
Doing a great job.
Yeah.
And we, I know this came up at, in some conversation we've had in the past, I don't remember how long ago, when we talked about. Sixty percent, I remember you talking about it in particular, at the time, middle schools just knocking out of the park with sixty percent numbers. And, you know, the idea being that, you know, you build a set of sixties on top of each other from grade four to grade eleven or whatever it is. You know, you, you're getting kids an extra year plus, and, cause you're, each year, you're starting at a sort, a sort of higher point. On average, right, I mean, kids are still gonna be all over the map, but, um, but that leaves them more prepared for what's next.
I, I mean, I just wanted to chime in a little bit, when we start looking at all of our numbers and, and even coming out of COVID, et cetera. I, I think the one thing we haven't even mentioned tonight is, the demographic has changed dramatically over this course of time, right? So, I think about Mendez, and in particular, uh, our, our English learners coming in. You know, they were like twenty four percent in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, it rose to thirty one percent in, in two years. So, as those students are learning English and learning to take the test, uh, that's significant in how they're performing, right? So, I, I think as we start to disaggregate the data, we do have to step back and say, okay, where are these students? And what is that, and talk about growth, Mark, right, that's where that growth of that sixty percent, that's where we've got a target. And to your point, Paul, earlier, it's, okay, look at these kids here, how are they growing, and then what's that look like?
And when continued sixty, sixty on the SGP gets to be pretty difficult.
Yeah.
Because, you know, you, you, you continue to grow at that rate, and now, okay, I'm supposed to be teaching his curriculum, but, you know. May not be a sustainable thing, but.
We used to look at the percentage above state average, right, I mean, that was always a, a calculation that folks were looking at, it was, okay, are we ten or fifteen percentage points? On average, above the state average, and, and that would relate to growth, but again, to Abishak's point earlier too. That growth doesn't necessarily mean, I may be above the state average year one and year two, my growth may not be sixty percent. It might just be the one year growth of fifty percent, which is what is expected, right? It's, that's the, but the, the point I'm making is, the overall increase is what we should be looking at.
And I think the other thing that I wanna make sure I point out is, when we, when we looked at this, this was the. The entire district not broken down by demographic, we've done that in our, in our meetings, and in our data team meetings, and in our curriculum leadership meetings. We know where our weaknesses lie, and it is, it is in our, our population of, of high need students, right? That's where we need to improve our instructional practices, and that's why we really need to look at our interventions and what we're doing to ensure that kids are getting what they need. Um, when we disaggregate the data, we, we, we see that the students that are falling. Below the meets and exceeds category are our students who are receiving English language support, and are students that are receiving, um. And our students that are receiving, um. Special education support, that, that's, that's what the data is showing us, so we've got to do a better job for those particular students. And, you know, I, I have great faith in the work that Brittany and Christie are doing, because they are working really hard. To work with our, our teachers to meet the needs of those students, but it's not just them, we've gotta make sure that. Everybody is getting there and that we're, we're getting to the root of what the issue is. And we have to change some of the way we're, we're instructing on a regular basis, not just during our pullout time. Not just during our EL time or our specific time for those, those students, it's, it's what are we doing in our tier one support? For all of these kids, so, you know, that's, that's the root of it, right?
And as you're kind of diving into the interventions, is it, I'm assuming, I mean, you guys work really well as a team, but I'm assuming it's like with. The diving into those interventions are not just looking at the tier one, it's like pulling Christie and pulling Brittany and having those conversations. Cause there's so much, I would imagine that kind of across, that like you said, not just having it be those, the, the pullout or the targeted, you know. Uh, pieces, but the full picture altogether.
I'll use Christie as an example, and, and I've written it four times already tonight, but she's gonna be the next person in. And partly because before she came aboard, we didn't have the structured curriculum for our, our English language. Uh, acquisition students, right, we, we just didn't have it, she is, she started implementing it last year at Warren and Mindes, but so it's. There is something now that we have that is standardized, that is really helping our students. Um, and that was a big push on her, and, uh, so I think having her come and talk about that will be really critical for you to understand. That we will be moving these students, um, along, uh, at a, at a pretty high rate.
And she is, she's attending the data team meetings, so Christie's going to these data team meetings, and she's discussing. The data with, you know, the regular education teachers as well as the, uh, EL staff.
Sorry, uh, I, I was just gonna say, looking at the data, there's a lot of data there, and I think context is, is the most important thing, like you mentioned that. Um, and so, and you also mentioned that we have in our graphs the state, uh, which in some ways. Is, 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 is like this macro thing that we're looking at from a somewhat of a distance, cause we're not using it as a bar, we're using it as a shape maybe. To see if we're shaped the same way, I wonder whether, um, how easy it would be to pull. Cause we wanna give some context that's meaningful, that doesn't take an hour to present, but, uh, we do it for a lot of other things. I don't know if there's, um, curricularly similar districts that we'd be able to graph. And, and even that, it might even be a, a, hey, this is one that might usually be a little higher than us, but we wanna, we wanna track, and here's one that. You know, just, I, I know there might be different districts that we use for all the other financial stuff.
Yeah, so we have that data, it's the DART data, right, on the Desi website, and, you know, the districts that are similar to ours. But when you start pulling those districts, we can argue, they're really not similar to ours. But that's how the state looks at it, like similar, um. Similar budgets, similar, like Dedham, I, I always, like, look at Dedham and Burlington, no, they're on our list from the state. But are they really similar districts?
But we also have the ability to do that through open architects, so we can ask them to get the data from the districts that we choose. And they put it on a dashboard for us.
I would rather you choose similar districts. Because to me, that would be, that would be good if you're like, hey, here are the, you know, not ten of them, but like, here's three or four districts that we track. And we, we, we think we're similar to or aspire to, or, or, or things like that, so.
So, so, ju- uh, give an example, right, for twenty twenty-four, these are the districts the state says they're most similar to us. Chelmsford, Danvers, Easton, Foxborough, Marblehead, Marshfield, North Andover, Secoq. Stonem and Tewksbury, those are the most similar according to the state, based on our ELL, uh, low income. You know, s- standards, and that's, and that's what they're looking at, in total enrollment, uh, like, so, yeah, it is interesting, and that's changed over the years. Because it used to be Burlington, it used to be Dedham, um, so.
Right, and we're changing.
Correct, our demographic is changing, therefore, how they're viewing us against the state is changing as well.
I think my last question is, you know, have you guys taken a look back at, at either the strategic plan or the. The, the sort of the, the, um, measurements, you know, the indicators of, of accomplishing the different aspects of the strategic plan? Or even this year's goals, um, to see whether there's anything that is suggested by the data. At either a building level, grade level, or district wide, that would be worth, you know what, let's, let's look at this. And I think it's mostly around, like, the, the way we measure things, it's not like new goals, right? But whether there's, you know, something in there to say like, okay, we've now identified, to your point, Mike, some groups that we're not doing a great job with. And, you know, is there something that needs to be added in as a specific action or what have you to address things that the test shows? That we, that we hadn't identified before?
Uh, not necessarily, because I think, I think we have, have identified already that the, the, the place that we need to. Make our biggest level of improvement are for our subgroups, and we've had identified that, and we've also identified the fact that we need to improve our. Our intervention processes, so I, I think that this, this data didn't necessarily show us anything that we didn't already know. And that we haven't already identified in the strategic plan. And just to go back a, a moment too, we, we do have the comparable data. For a number of other districts that Jim and I have already chosen, um, that we feel like are more comparable to us. And of those twenty-two schools that we've, or districts that we've chosen, we're, we're like smack dab in the middle in terms of. Our, our achievement ratings for two thousand twenty-four, um, so I, you know. Obviously, we're not gonna elongate this presentation anymore, but if this is something that you wanna look at, I, I can certainly put something together about that too.
So Mark, to your point, I, I, I wanna highlight from the strategic plan, the two components of the equity component, right? Maxi- maximize the academic growth of every student, uh, and provide more equitable access to all levels of curriculum and activities. To provide more students with growth opportunities, so those are things that we're focused on, right, from an academic standpoint, that falls into the strategic plan from an equity standpoint.
Yeah, I, I think what I was, I, I didn't think that that would be to that level, but it was more like, um, if there was some indicator of success. I forgot what terminology we used around that, that would say, you know, increase X by three percent.
Yeah, I, we, correct, we haven't.
And, and, I don't know if there's something there or not. But it's, and it's, I'm not, I'm not looking to. Go back and redo goals.
No, 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 it, it would be the indicators of success, yeah.
I just feel like I wanna make, at this point, I'd look to, just to the quick little check here, in terms of SGP and, and ELA. Of the twenty-two districts that we feel are the most similar to us, we, we rank third in SGP. In two thousand twenty-four, in ELA for grades three through eight, so when we think about where we, we felt like we're struggling. Clearly, the other, those districts, those districts may have been as well.
And that, that provides us the context to say, hey, we need to address this, but the sky isn't falling, we didn't, we're not. You know, we're not, we're not the unicorn here that's struggling, uh, uniquely, right?
And the purpose of this meeting is that, for us to understand that you are in fact looking at all those different, you know, angles, different ways of, of viewing this. And, and getting to the bottom of what we can control.
Yeah, and, and, and having a, having a graph that kind of maybe shows that, shows where we are there, and then, you know, the next page can say, hey, what's our per pupil spending? And relative to those same districts, and, you know, we'll see, you know, you know, compare those two, and, you know, that just kind of goes to. What we're doing with, with the resources we have, and it kind of highlights that, right?
Mike, Mike offered either do a twenty-minute presentation or an hour presentation? And we told him, go with the twenty-minute, there'll be a lot of questions. Cause they weren't a part of the original conversation, that, that there's like four times as much, right, could be talking about.
It could be a three-hour presentation, if, you know, there's, there's a lot to unpack.
They only had about eleven slides, so, and that lasted an hour, and it was only supposed to be twenty minutes.
No, this is helpful, I mean, obviously you guys have your, um, you know, finger on the pulse of what needs to be looked at, and it's already part of. Um, you know, the plan of what you're doing, so it's helpful, um, to share this, so thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Actually got a question, I, I'm, I'm not trying to beat a dead horse on this topic here, but, um, with the passing of the, the new referendum this year, um. Removing it as a graduation requirement, do you still play into place as much of a focus on MCAS? Or how does your approach change, is what I'm kind of asking?
That's coming up in a moment, good foreshadowing. The superintendent's report.
Excellent, thank you, okay, first, we get to the calendar.
No, we're gonna, we moved that below.
Thank you, I didn't cross it off on my list, thank you, Wards, please.
Uh, between October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, and November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, I, Paul Kendall. Authorized by my signature payables in the amount of nine hundred, four hundred eighty-eight. Nine hundred thousand, four hundred eighty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents, this includes general fund expenses of. Four hundred sixty-nine thousand, one hundred fifty-five dollars and sixty-six cents, revolving expenses of four hundred three thousand, one hundred sixty-six. One hundred sixty-one dollars and twenty cents, and grant expenses of twenty-eight thousand, one hundred seventy-two dollars and twelve cents.
Excellent, thank you, Paul, now you can answer Abhishek's question.
Well, I'll get there, right? Yeah, just a few things, one, obviously, uh, last week, um, a number of us attended the MASC, MASs conference. Uh, it was well attended, uh, overall across the state, uh, Chris and I did a presentation on the first day on Wednesday. Um, basically how to navigate the financial cliff caused from all the federal funds, uh, it was pretty well attended. Um, and, uh, you know, thank you for, Chris, for putting together a lot of, uh, of the work in it, into it to give us the data. Um, secondly, we are in the process of revamping our website, as you, I think I've mentioned previously. Our vendor that we currently have, uh, has been sold, uh, so we're in the process of, of working through, uh, what our new website will look like. And, you know, stay tuned to that, uh, the goal is to roll it out July one, uh, as our contract ends with the current vendor. Uh, on June thirtieth, uh, today, Mike and I, and along with a number of other folks, I had the good pleasure of, of heading over to Holliston High School. Uh, where our, um, unified basketball team was awarded the MIAA, uh, twenty twenty-four, uh, Team Sportsmanship Award. Uh, it was awesome, it was great, so we got to watch them play, it was, actually, all the Tri Valley teams were there, it was, it was, it was just an awesome. Uh, event, and, uh, congratulations to our team for winning, uh, the sportsmanship awards.
They were actually nominated by another team.
Right, they were nominated by another team, uh, for their, um. It was great, so now let's get to ballot question number two, um, MCAS, uh, and the graduation requirement. So my notes, as I was writing them, uh, previously, was, you know, there's still this fallout, right, of, we don't know what's going to happen still. Uh, I shared with the community and with the committee, um, the Department of Ed's, uh, guidance on, um. On question two, uh, which takes effect on December fifth, uh, and what does that really mean for the students of Ashland? And, um, and across the Commonwealth, was currently, the, the students in the graduating class of twenty twenty-five. Do not need, uh, the passing, um, threshold on the MCAS to receive, uh, a diploma. Or what they're con- they call the competency determination for your, um, for your diploma. It's gonna revert back to local control at, at this point, what I would caution folks is to not get too, um. Carried away with this yet, uh, partly because, uh, we will have to look at our policy, uh, included in, uh, the school committee policies. There are policies, I was, um, at a meeting yesterday, Tim Pavovar, who was the superintendent of Westwood, who was at Villarica. Originally in their policy, it actually states specifically that the students must pass the MCAS. So, the MCAS is not going away, it's still going to be used for accountability, so to answer your question, uh, Abhishek. I, hopefully, our teachers have never emphasized that this is the most important thing to do, is to pass the MCAS. Because I, I do not ever want that being the, the message that we're sending, at least from a teaching and administrative standpoint. It was important because there was a requirement to pass to get your diploma. That being said, the state, there's still no opt-out of the MCAS, folks are still going to be required to take the MCAS. It still will, um, Mike, you know, will still be presenting information on the MCAS because it is a, a data point. Uh, and it is still going to be used for an accountability standpoint at the Department of Ed, at this point in time. Again, caution to the wind, there's possible legislative, um, actions that could come down the road as to what. A diploma might look like even at the state level, so, one of the things that's being, um, bantered around, and Mark, maybe you've heard a little bit in your circles. But is, are we looking at the mass core, right, as the, a, a common determinant for all districts to have? Uh, for a diploma, or are we truly going to, to go back and revert to local control in determining what that looks like? Um, and then we can determine as a school district, uh, and school committee, what that assessment, is there going to be an assessment? In addition to, uh, the classes that you're required to take. Um, so, so to your question, hopefully, we're not putting tremendous emphasis on it to begin with. Uh, it's, it's just a tool that the sophomores had to have, um, in order to get their, their diploma. We don't have that anymore, there's also a little bit of concern and question mark with regard to our. And Tina, you and I were in that setting together, uh, at, at the conference on our special education students, and how many of our special education students? Previous years have not in, or current year, have not passed the MCAS that otherwise would have received a diploma had they met all of the other requirements. Uh, for the schools, um, that we've set within our policy. Um, I think we've identified one in, in our system, um, so what does that look like? Um, and again, I'm gonna defer to our attorneys and to determine what is the best approach of action. Um, coming out of the conference, it was, hey, December fifth comes, rolls around, December sixth, you re-enroll those students, you give them a diploma.
I was very surprised to hear that, to be honest.
Right, right, but that's what was said, if I did not misinterpret. Yeah, but, but that was, um, that's a conversation that needs to happen, um, at all levels, uh, so. So here we are, it's still up in the air, uh, I think you've got the, on record, the center president and the governor. Uh, who were, um, vocal against the MCAS ballot, um. So we'll see if it goes anywhere within the legislature, uh, slate of actions.
Have you had any contact with the senator's office?
I have not, um, but, uh, I plan to in the next day or two for a couple of reasons, so, yeah.
In conversations that I, um, you know, where state representatives are involved before the ballot initiative passed, even those that were in favor of. And clearly, this wasn't like the whole house or anything, but just, you know, kind of interest groups, that there was very much a feeling that even if it passed. That it's, as it moved, as things, as the legislature starts back up in January, that, that there would be definitive, you know, direction.
They're gonna be working on some kind of.
So, so I would anticipate hearing something more definitive as the legislature comes back to session in January, but what that is, I don't know.
Right, and, and it puts districts in a, a bind, though, right, depending upon how long it takes to, if they decide to pass something. We'll see.
It's not the first time the state's left us in a bind.
No, not the first time, nor will it be the last.
Oh, my.
But that's where we are.
Did you have anything else, Mike, or is that your, your show for tonight?
That's, that was, you've heard enough from me.
If you have something, feel free to share it.
We had our PD day on, on the, on the fifth. So we, we went over our Alice protocols and procedures, we talked about, um, getting ready to have a upcoming safety drill. In the schools, um, the next month or so. Uh, so teachers took some time to do that, we had some building-based learning, and we also, um. Had a presentation on special education law, uh, from an attorney, which is really important information for all of our staff to understand. Unfortunately, we had a collaborative effort with ASIPAC, uh, tremendous effort from, uh, Tracy Tarizano. Uh, who worked with an organization from Easter Seals to try to get some, um, folks who live with disabilities. To come in and talk to our staff about, uh, their life and, and their struggles, and the importance of, uh, inclusion. Inclusive practices, uh, but there was a transportation mishap, and, um. They were not able to get to us to have, actually have us, uh, listen, so we're, you know. Tracy's efforts were tremendous, and I wanna thank her for the collaboration, and, uh, we were, it was unfortunate that it didn't work out, but we hope that we can. Work something out in the future, uh, to have that program for our staff.
Great, thank you, okay, um. Okay, um, let's do the calendar.
Sure. Uh so each year that come before you to start getting the calendar ready for the next school year. Uh as you know, we had a roundabout last year um over and over with the calendar. Uh so I've got two options I want to share uh for the twenty five, twenty six school year. I will pull them up uh on the screen. This is the first option that um that takes into account and it does recognize the the um the religious observances that we've discussed here in the past. Uh what you'll notice about this calendar, there are two key points. Uh one is uh that winter vacation uh goes through January second again, uh with the last day of school uh being set for uh June eighteenth. Uh should there be a snow day, uh obviously that would uh move us into the following week, the twenty second, twenty third. So the last day would actually be the twenty sixth if you had five snow days. Um we have averaged, just frame of reference in my eleven years, one snow day per year. So um that's option one. And then we can come back to this. Option two uh is really just the removal of the the January second. So coming back after um the first. And then so that obviously moves the last day to the seventeenth. So it provides a snow day uh opportunity in the eighteenth. Um and we would go into the following week with the twenty fifth actually being uh if you had five snow days on the calendar. So those are really the two um, the two options that I've looked at. Now, again, I've, as I've always done, I've run this by um the union to make sure, in in sure that we've had all our professional development days, our early release days accounted for, et cetera, and Kristen and I actually talked today. And everything's been accounted for um from a contractual standpoint. It's really, what's the, what's the preference of the board uh in terms of the calendar that we can then share out to the community? I I know we might have reconsidered our calendar a little bit this year. You know, with that January second in the the timeframe, um starting on the twentieth. But uh this goes to the twenty third, which is a half day, um and then from there we have the break. Thoughts, questions, concerns?
I don't think anybody's gonna come in on the second if we, if we have.
I don't either, but that being said.
I, I think we might even have trouble staffing.
I don't, I, I will be honest, I mean, talking to Kristen, um she was, she said to me, she said, Jim, I, I'd prefer to have the second as a school day because it provides us an additional opportunity at the end of the year to get out a day earlier. I get it.
Cause it, it's impactful if we have one, one snow day.
That's right, and because of Juneteenth, it's just the way it falls, again. That's the, that's the, the struggle here, right? It's on a Friday.
But if, but if I recall, our current calendar, one of the reasons we made the decision to add was because of a conversation around of absenteeism and that, right, and so.
But we heard some later feedback that after that, the second would be a good day to come back, uh again.
I think it's six and one half dozen in the other. If we end up getting a snow day, no, very few people are gonna come in on that Monday, the twenty second, too. So it's, you know, I think.
But that, that, that's probably a less impactful day to miss than than.
It might be, right. I, I don't know. I, I think it's a Fri- it's a, it's a Friday before.
Yeah.
It, it means a Friday, so.
It's a Friday coming back from a holiday with only one day, so no, I honestly, I don't, I don't think you're missing anymore.
Six and one half dozen in the other, to be honest.
That's exactly what it is, and I, you know, and I don't even have any personal skin in this game, honestly. But, uh, you know, I, I would want to use my vote on what I thought was gonna be right for at least the majority of the district, which I'm having a hard time getting to the bottom of. I've had many families sort of thank us for giving us that extra time. And I've also had a group of teachers sharing with me that they would much have preferred to be back in school so they could utilize the time at the end of the year. So um all I can really do is just put that out there as the different kinds of feedback that I got. But I still am not clear on what most people want.
I thi- I think coming back on the second makes the second, makes that middle, the, you, you, to your point, a useless day. Right, where coming back on the Monday, you can actually start to build momentum again and and it's, and.
Well, and coming back on that, oh, oh, me, me coming back from the holiday on the Monday, okay. I thought you meant if there was a snow day, having the last day.
I think the fact that it's on a Friday makes this conversation a little trickier.
The, the other thing that's different between this year and next year is this year, we have two days. We have Thursday, Friday, the second and third.
Right.
Correct.
That, that was, I think, the harder.
Right, right, right.
I was not in favor of of having basically a full two-week break. When we had two days, we could have been here Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. But I think where you're talking about one day.
It's the third.
And it's a Friday, it's, well, it's.
No, 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 I'm talking about this year. It's the third was the date, yes. That was the question mark that Paul brought up even after.
I think the idea of coming that second feels like by definition a wasted day. And I think there will be a lot of people who'll be like, yeah, you know what, I can take a vacation, like, after Christmas, get a full week here.
Right.
Um, yeah, I think to me, I'd probably in favor of not being open on the second this time around.
Well, I am looking for a vote.
All right. So with, let me make sure.
This would be option one.
Option one, yeah. So I will move to approve um the option, shows the option one for the twenty twenty five, twenty six calendar. For clarity, say that that would be the one where we are not open on January second.
I'll second that.
And then I just want to just continue the discussion for one more minute in case Marcy wants to add anything. I don't want to forget that you're there, Marcy, and if you have any feedback on. Do you have anything that you want to share about whether coming back on the second is a good idea or a bad idea?
Well, if I remember the conversation correctly, part of the reason we didn't have people come back is because the absenteeism rate on the second is like the highest of the year, so I am in favor of the motion.
Okay.
To go with option one.
All right, so any more discussion on the motion?
Nope.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
We have to roll the hall.
Marcy?
Uh, yes.
Tina?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, thank you. So we'll publish that this week.
All right, um, policies. These are first reads, the next few, the athletic concussion regulations, JJ IFR. I think I need glasses.
Would you like mine? So I, I did share the policies with you. This is the first read uh tonight. Uh the, the nurses have asked that we make sure we get it on tonight's um agenda and December thirteenth's agenda. Uh this really relates to adjustments that they've made uh in the concussion policy. You've got the red line version as well. Uh you can see there were significant changes, um and it's really about procedure as well as um, you know, pulling out specific tests, like the impact testing was, was something that was very specific in terms of the test they used for concussions. Uh they've sort of streamlined that to say a, I forgot the term without pulling it up.
They got, they got rid of branding.
They got rid of branding, basically.
Yeah, so.
Um it, we had the nurse come in, uh or one of the nurses come in to discuss the policy changes. And um they're comfortable with it. They are currently using our old policy, just so you know, in terms of of treating students. We had a number of concussions uh in the fall uh for athletics. Uh but they're, you know, again, they're just making sure that they are following um proper protocols, so.
And, and uh just to, to reiterate with something we talked about in our uh policy subcommittee meeting, uh when we talked about the urgency of these changes and whether it's in, has any substantive impact as to what uh the care or or anything we're doing for students. The only change uh that this would make from a substantive perspective is the current policy has a non-industry standard, more conservative uh back-to-play model. So you're, you're out for longer with the current policy than is in the, you know, current best practices. So there's no harm to the students right now, so there's not an impetus. If there was, if there, if it was, say, the other way around, uh then I, I would probably say, hey, let's, let's vote to not do the two read and and get it in there. But there's not an urgency for this uh from that perspective. There's, all the professionals are still able to do um the right thing for the, for the student athletes.
So I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying, Paul. So that, to the extent that there's a change reflected in the getting back into the sport scenario, there, there has been a change in sort of what's best recommended medical practice?
I don't know if it's a change, but it's, our policy has them staying out longer than the current best practice would uh would, would, would say, so.
Current best practice defined by?
Uh a couple of places. Um so and I have them listed in the actual clean copy, the, the Department of Ed,
Yeah.
uh the MIAA, uh as well as um doctors and uh they, they've been in collaboration with that, yeah.
And as, as though Jim went back and and linked all the references to all the, all the things in there, so, but uh, but I asked that specific question, like, hey, we did all this work. You know, are we still able, are, are, are the professionals there still able to do what they believe they need to do for the, for our student athletes? And the answer was yes. This was the only substantive change in what they're going to do um be able to do once we adopt the policy is get them back in action, uh you know, based on different, uh best practices as opposed to uh, you know, a fixed time timeline that's in the current policy.
Anybody have any issues or questions? It's just a first read, so we're not voting, but you have some time to um come back with feedback the next time. Sound good? Okay, um a division and mission statement, we have to add it.
Yeah, the second one, um, they were talking about division and mission. Uh we just, we've, obviously, it was not updated since two thousand and eleven. Uh and we've certainly voted here already to pass new vision and mission. Um so all I've done is uh, as you can see, the red line version here, uh here's the actual new vision and mission. Uh but we added a line because we felt it was appropriate uh that the school committee will, will review and publish the vision and mission statement on an annual basis. Uh therefore, we will be publishing it, obviously, on the website or wherever we have it.
And, and our conversations around this were should we either update the policy as here or remove the policy?
Because we've already actually voted.
Right, we approved it, yeah.
We just need to get the other one out of our policy manual and replace this. But we've also added the line about making sure that it's on review.
Is it really a policy? We don't know, right? It's, it's just a statement.
Policy is that we will look at the policy, look at the statement.
The policy is.
Having it here means we are, we, we are formally writing, we need to do this and we will have this.
That's right.
So that's the, the value of it. Other than that, I, I questioned, you know, like, why do we have a mission statement or, or revision statement in a policy that's not policy, but if it, it, you know, kind of like a circular logic of having it there and having that last statement commits us to doing it, so.
Right.
So we're.
I, I don't, I didn't have a strong opinion either way.
So again, first read.
Yeah, first read, we don't have to take any action. Face coverings was just, you know, whether the continued relevance of it.
So the face coverings we put into play during COVID, um and uh again, you know, just looking for this one to be removed from, from our policy handbook.
Hopefully never to be seen again.
Right.
So, yeah, this was long
Right.
long time coming to get even into policy.
Awesome. Um second read, which means we've already had a chance to introduce and discuss these a little bit.
Yeah.
The nondiscrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation.
So we had looked at this, this is actually our third time, I believe, looking at it because the, the first time we didn't vote and we added um Mike in uh in, into a section based on our, our attorney's um recommendation at the bottom, where this is inquiries concerning uh directed at the um Dr. Michael Kyra, this is in superintendent. That was the only change that we had added from the, the last time, but we couldn't vote on it because I didn't have that language. So this one is ready to be voted on, so we can get it into play.
Who's got the motion?
Well, any?
Any discussion?
So um so, so we're, we're just looking at AC right now.
Correct, correct, yep.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve policy AC, nondiscrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation as presented.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
She said I. Roll call, so Marcy.
Marcy?
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and the next are the regulations um that go along with it for the staff, ACR, nondiscrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation.
So the recommendation uh from our uh legal team was this can be removed uh because it's being picked up in AC. That, and that's what we had talked about last time, but it was significant if people wanted to read it to make sure that. Um but everything in here is, has been incorporated into AC.
Do we have to vote on removals?
Yeah.
I would think so.
Okay.
Yeah, we're getting rid of it.
So the motion is to rescind.
So I'll move to rescind policy AC dash R, nondiscrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation.
Great.
Second.
Thank you.
Marcy, all in favor? Marcy?
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Aye. And then on the consent agenda, do we have a motion? To approve the consent agenda? Do we have gifts and donations this week?
We do. They're in there.
Uh move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, Marcy?
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Aye. And we're near the end. Reports of school committee members. I'll start with you, Abhishek.
Uh so nothing really much going on uh student body-wise, like significantly. Um I know Mr. Kyra, I don't know if you want to comment on the recent Make-A-Wish trip?
I would love to, however, I'm going to let the chair discuss that.
I was gonna pass that along to you, but I, okay, because they're sick of hearing from me. Thank you for deferring, but they, I'm like a broken record about.
I will be as quick as possible then. I had the absolute privilege of attending the Make-A-Wish trip, the annual trip to the Give Kids the World Village in Orlando with thirty-five, thirty-four amazing students and um I was a first-time attendee and I, I will say that it was one of the, the greatest things I've ever been around as an educator in my twenty-five years in education. To watch our students interact with the families and the children who attended uh the Give Kids the World Village. To watch the empathy and um care of our students was truly impressive. Um especially for me to be able to see these students who I've watched grow since they were five years old to become just incredible young adults. Uh it was, it was really powerful experience for me as a person, but also as a, as a professional. And I'm just so very proud of our students. Uh Mrs. Shields, who organizes the trip, deserves a just tremendous amount of, of praise. Um I admire the work that she does and um it really was a, a remarkable experience to have. So just our, our kids that went on it represented Ashland and their families in the, in the greatest possible way. We have much to be proud of. Those, those thirty-four kids really, really showed um the Ashland, the Ashland way in, in, in everything they did. It was, it was a remarkable, remarkable experience.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh that, that's all for me. Um there's not really much going on right now. It's been quiet.
Awesome. Chris, did you want to share about the conference at all? Thank you for doing that.
Oh, yeah, nope. No, I thought the conference uh was great. It was my first experience attending that particular conference. Hope to go back in the future. Um I thought our presentation was, was uh, like Jim mentioned, well-tended. So no, that's, that's really all I had, but it was a great experience all around.
Awesome, thank you. Tina?
Well, my update is about the conference as well, too. Um I was there for a couple, two of the days. Um and I thought the, the sessions that I attended were informative and um interesting. My favorite, the, my favorite one that, that I was able to be a part of was actually the keynote on Thursday morning. Where um they, it was Timothy Shriver, who um is part of the, the bigger picture candidate, when Eunice Shriver was his mom. Um he presented his project called the Dignity Index. Uh and it's something, especially in the climate that we're currently living in, that has, I've been mulling over in my brain since, since the conversation. I've talked to multiple people about it and I think it's an excellent framework for how we engage with other people. Um the whole concept is The whole concept is being mindful of the dignity with which we view and speak to other people in terms of making sure that we treat others with humanity, and being mindful of how much contempt is in our words and our actions and how we treat other people. And so, you know, the goal is not to, you know, kind of put down your swords when you disagree with people and just find a happy medium. That's not the goal of the Dignity Project, or the Dignity Index, rather. The goal is to, to work towards recognizing people's humanity and not othering people all of the time. It doesn't mean you have to agree, doesn't mean you have to like them, it doesn't mean you have to come to any consensus, but recognizing other people as, as humans. It was, it was incredibly powerful, and I said, the, the visuals, I, I literally gathered a couple of the things that were on the table to bring them home and share them with some people. I think it's a really powerful kind of framework to, to help guide and engage conversations. And, and I'm hoping that you'll be able to share it with Jen Cutler, too. I think it's, it, that's a, it's a, it's a great, it was just, it was very powerful for me, especially given where we were last week. Yeah, this, here's the prop.
Yeah.
So the Dignity Index, so it's, you know, it, it kind of goes through, you know, kind of building skills for dignified disagreement, where it talks about being curious and not furious, you know, regulate then debate, you know, like, if you're not ready to have a respectful conversation, then maybe take a moment, right? And it goes through all of these different things. I won't do all of them, but it was really powerful, it was a really cool exercise, I think, that he, he took the audience through. And I've since checked out their website and their, their social media pages, and they, they do a good job in terms of helping you pinpoint or, or recognize. And a lot of this is about awareness, right? Especially self-awareness, but when contempt is in people's words and actions and, and how it, how it, I don't want to say skews a conversation, but how it leads to a lack of conversation, right? And it's just really interesting, so I'd encourage you all to check it out. I think it was a very, like I said, was my favorite part of the, the conference, and I think it was a really powerful, yeah, you can have your card back, I have a few of them at home.
Before you put it away.
It was really powerful, I found it to be really powerful.
Thanks, Tina.
Yeah.
Sorry to have missed that one.
No, that, that, I will be a broken record, that was, that was an amazing thing, and, you know, I'll paraphrase what he said, is, you know, it, it also didn't say that you can never use contempt or anything like that, but he said, it's about being mindful, basically, about, and, and it labels it and gives you the ability to rake where you are, and, and he said, you know, if you use contempt to express your point, you're automatically creating an enemy of your point, right? So you're not doing yourself a, a service when you do that, so it's about understanding when you're doing that. So it, it was, it was the best.
Right. And, and to that point, he, that, that's absolutely such a good point, because it's not, the goal is to not never have contempt, sometimes that's just, we're, we're there, right? The goal is to balance it out so that there's more dignity in your conversations than there ever is contempt, and in your relationships, really. It's not just about one conversation at a time, and so that's, and that's really, because it's hard, it's hard.
And sometimes, sometimes you, it's actually pointful to do it.
Yeah.
It, it, you know, he, he made a point, because there was somebody who was challenging in the back, and he's like, this isn't the, you know, be nice movement, this isn't the, you know, compromise movement, it, it isn't any of that. It's, it's, it's more about mindfulness and understanding where you are and, and, and to make sure you're doing it with intention to get the results you want, right? And, and I think that's the most powerful thing, and I, you know, hopefully, most of the people got the idea that it's really an internal thing, right? It's not about judging other people. It, that, that's not the intent of it, it isn't an intent to go say, Mark, you were, you were a two on this, what the heck? It's, it's actually more about.
I live in the twos.
It, it, it's more about yourself, so it would, I, I agree, it was, it was phenomenal. But I also, one of the other interesting ones, I did stay on Friday later than normal because there was a session that was, had undaunted K-12, MSBA, Eversource, and everything about, about some funding, and the MSBA is actually introducing a new program for, for heat pumps as well, so that's, that's an interesting industry one, and there's also some other new programs that were being announced by Mass Ave and things like that, so there's some interesting things there. And that kind of brings me into hot off the presses, we, we've talked about in the past, the Inflation Reduction Act and the changes, the recent changes to that, that allow taxes in cities to actually file for the incentive rebates for sustainability projects. And this morning, we actually filed for the town of Ashland, so I say the town of Ashland because we have both projects that were, were found to be eligible to the tune of, the overall is going to be three million, one hundred seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars, of which the, the Mendez project was a little over two-point-three million of that, and Public Safety, a little over eight-hundred thousand, so until we get the check, it is, it is what it is.
Right, but great, thanks.
But that was submitted today, so that's, if that comes to fruition, that's a, that's a big number, that's a, it'd be a huge win for, for the town, so.
Have any idea how long it takes to hear on this stuff?
Okay, so the, the line is that it takes forty-five business days from the filing deadline. When we did the extension, our extension went through the fifteenth of November. Oddly enough, forty-five business days from the fifteenth of, of November is January twenty-third. So.
It might be a little while.
Well.
Yeah.
Well.
Well.
We'll see what happens.
We'll see what happens.
I mean, I.
Still there.
I'd, I'd love to think that he's got other things that he's, you know, going to look at rather than on day one, right? Something that, that, you know, makes the check. But hopefully, we get it before that. That's, that's just the expectation, so as long as they meet the, they, they beat the expectation by a few days, you know, there, there wouldn't be a chance that it wouldn't go through.
Okay.
You also?
I think so. I, I won't go out on anything better, better than that, so.
Yeah, right. I got a follow. No, I, I was gonna, I would fully echo Tina and Paul's comments about the keynote presentation on Thursday morning, I thought that was the highlight of the program for what I was able to attend. I did think the moderated discussion Friday morning led by John Keller from WBC about sort of, you know, where do we go from here in terms of potential changes in, in education was, was interesting, you know, obviously, there's a lot of will see in that, but it was an interesting conversation. One thing, I was gonna, just back on the, the first program, what I thought was interesting in theirs, they actually talked about the Utah School Boards Association had adopted this Dignity Index, and I think it's among the membership, like the equivalent of the MASAs, I understood it, but they started only five. And so what they're basically saying is, we're not even accepting one through four, and so sort of their bottom starting point would be, the other side has the right to be here and right to be heard, it's their country, too, kind of thing, is the sample statement. I just thought that was an interesting thing, and I think it, you know, from a, from our board perspective, and we've talked at different times about, you know, are there any expectations that we want to kind of codify into policy? I think we did that a few years ago to some extent, and maybe it's an interesting conversation for a later date as to, you know, what we want to be in place as sort of a quasi-school committee bylaw or standard of expectations. But other than that, I don't think I have anything at this point. I think last site council was before our last meeting, so that's all I've got.
Thanks. Mike said it best, you guys have heard me say it before. The only part that I want to repeat is to shout out the students and the, the chaperones who put so much work into this, and the students were amazing, and I can't tell you how many adults on campus, whether they were parents of wished children or employees of Give Kids the World, approached us to just talk about how mature and compassionate and hardworking our students were. Some people took my address because they wanted to contact the district, and I think we should just all be very proud of the way they represented us out there, so.
Just a reminder, ten meetings next week.
Be there or be square.
Marcy get arrested.
Marcy, I'm sorry.
I'm looking for.
Marcy.
Don't forget me, but I don't have anything.
Marcy and Mark both had students on the trip as well, and, and it was really great getting to know them, so.
Just, I got pictures of Pete on a plane next to Mike flying down.
Yeah.
A random one from Pete and Lori, you just pointed out, it was Friday, maybe?
Yep.
Friday, Saturday.
Yep. And Gillian was in my group, we all had small groups, so it was, it was a nice opportunity